All the meetings were ordered, City of University Heights, City Council meeting today is May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Welcome to the public here tonight and welcome everyone. Anyone on Zoom tonight, Mike?
No.
Okay, so we have two council members absent and three are here. We have Tim is absent tonight and so is Doug. So I'm glad the three of you can come tonight. Thank you very much. And then we'll go to approval of minutes, April eighth and April twenty fifth. They were circulated by Mike. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes, both minutes will be approved by unanimous consent. Okay, first order of business is public input, comments from the public. And I know Joe Swan is here tonight from LRS to speak to the council. You want to come up, Joe, and speak at this podium here, this clear music manual?
A big one there. First of all, thank you very much. I am with LRS, been with LRS for about six weeks. So a little bit of background by myself, I'm an actually retired fireman for seven years now, better than sales. But more importantly, actually, I'm an elected official myself for about twenty five years now. I'm a master's degree in administration and really, really introduced people and been talking and kind of figure out problems. So, so why am I here? You guys have the LRS security for waste and recycling collection and I think a lot have changed since LRS, since I've been here and to really send the changes. I know since I deal with twenty six cities in Illinois, thirteen in Iowa, particularly Iowa, there's been a lot of challenges and obstacles that had to be overcome the last four months. And I don't know if you guys really felt them as much as some other towns and boroughs, but a lot of good things are moving on, a lot of good things are changing. We hired a new operations manager, Eric Liberty, Ed, from, he actually came from Dallas. And I don't know if you met Joey or not, but Joey Scott, he actually came from Mississippi. And a lot of, they hired me, so which the reason why I hired me is I'm the municipal manager for services. So, so you have a really a firsthand experience of a good content. Because that was one of the problems, I think, one of the issues they had passed was, who we contacted? And when it comes to the city administrator report, really anybody, you can call me with their visions. I've already talked to Joey a couple of times, talked to the mayor a couple of times. And we just want to make sure that we're very much more customer-oriented, a customer service focused. I think that was kind of slack, lacking, you know, some months prior to. And Chicago is where we're located. They really wanted to change their focus and the drive of Western Illinois and Eastern Iowa, where we have thirty plus communities. I wouldn't say that they didn't make that priority, but the past administration of the company seen other opportunities and we have UCEO, UCIO, and so they're like, listen, we want to drive this area, want to grow the area, but of course you can't grow unless we take care of the customer. Now, so that's my book, clearly, take care of the customers. So you'll see some things that hopefully that you'll better, better customer service. If there's any issues, of course, really anyone can call me and I will up to my car to the city administrator player. Actually, that we do have a call center, that call center being revamped with additional people. And so I know we've had a challenge where people are calling, I don't know if they're not your community members, but that's being revamped. There's really just been a huge turnover in growth in the company. That's our hope is. So I'm happy to take any questions you have. That's what I'm here for and what I have to do. Does anybody have any concerns?
Your contact information, is that available somewhere?
I have it. Yeah, and I'd happy to give you a part one before I leave. It has my cell phone number in my email on it. I have my cell phone. And so really, this is basically when you're in this position, you're in it for twenty four seven, seven days a week. I have my cell phone with me all the time. So if there's any issues, you can talk to me about.
Where are you an elected official?
So I started when I was twenty four years old. I was on a county board for six years. And then I was currently still on a township board for twenty two years now. And I just got off a college board where I did a six-year term and I actually finished someone else's term at the South. So I just finished that. So I kind of had a variety of different experiences, I guess.
One question I get sometimes is, does the recycling actually recycle?
Yes, particularly in Iowa, because Iowa is unique to almost any other state. So Iowa, there's every county has its own facility, landfill. And in that, they, certain partners wear that trash and, and recycle it. And I will say that even if we could, we would probably take it back to Chicago, even if not, because we have a hundred million dollar recycling facility up there that actually is on robotic, it's a jet sale that is very, very safe here, probably one of the best in the country. We actually ship all of the buff cities recycling back to Chicago to be, to be reused there. It's actually a very interesting way to deal. Actually, if you did, that Chicago's trash and our landfill in the block cities. They actually just thought three hundred semis a day that travel back and forth. And we just picked up Indianapolis, Indianapolis and the Antelope to do their fresh. But, you know, we, I am very much focused on communities here in Iowa, which, you know, generally are smaller and then another one, so. Just, I liked the first, I really liked this community that was driving through. I've been to Iowa, sitting in many times. And I didn't even realize University of Heights was actually a place. And then we were like, oh, what's this? And so it was actually, we were talking to the chief and he's kind of came in the low down. It was like, I said, kind of a cool thing. It's really nice to have something so unique and small, but yet in such a larger. So it's kind of, wish I could die.
Anything, sir?
I live in Iowa, I live in Illinois, so. Any other questions or anything? I appreciate your response, especially this last week. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's there's lots of different issues that could come up and that's really where I'm, that's why I'm here. And I know in a lot of other places, one of the biggest things I've heard was, we tried calling somebody, they're not going to answer. But we never got a phone call back. We never got an email back. That it's my goal is, we're literally not immediately, if there's well writers, at least respond. Sometimes I get emails and I don't get the answer, but at least want to respond and say, listen, I got to you, you know, I'm working on it. I will respond. You know, instead of just like ghosting on this. Well, half the time with most, and yes, you guys know, city government or town government, village, is that just want to be heard. And know that we know what the problem is and please try to fix it. And then, so there's so many other things that you play, so that we want to trash and recycling is one of those things where you just want, you want to take care of it and please don't let it go by, that's the thing. So that's my goal.
Thank you for coming, Joe, because it's always good to put a face to a name and I appreciate you offering to come and introduce yourself to the council.
I'm, I'm, I would prefer to see people, like when I used to grant grants, it was always better to hand a grant to somebody because it's harder to say no to somebody than they know you.
Yeah, very good. Thanks. Thanks for coming, Joe.
I'll probably leave this. Great idea. I'll throw a couple of cards out so you can have.
You can stay as long as you want, whatever you'd like. And is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak tonight? And there's no one on Zoom still. Okay, so then we'll go to mayor's report and we have two proclamations.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
First is consideration of resolution twenty five eleven approving proclamation for Older Americans Month, May two thousand and twenty five. Is there a motion by council?
Some move.
Motion by Nick, second, second by Lisa. Roll call vote.
John?
Hi.
Turbo?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Schroder, absent, Swales absent. Motion carries.
Okay, I will now read the proclamation. Older Americans Month, two thousand and twenty five proclamation. Whereas University Heights includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas University Heights recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age and whereas University Heights can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries and embracing our community's diversity. Now, therefore, I Louise Frome, Mayor of University Heights, do hereby proclaim, May two thousand and twenty five, to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. And John's here to accept the proclamation. Thanks for coming, John. You want to say a few words?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank the mayor for proclamation and the council. Johnson County Livable Communities for Successful Age and Policy Board asked for the proclamation, were pleased to, to accept it. Our work with the county is really to connect older Americans with services within the county and within each community. We're currently conducting a community survey that will assess folks' knowledge and familiarity with the eight domains of vulnerability from the ALP. This survey really is intended to help make sure that folks are connected with services or know that they're aware. And if they're not, it will provide us with guidance in our strategic plan for next three to five years to help older Americans connect with services that they may need. To complete the survey, and if you could push this out in any media that you have with your city or town, that would be great. They said livablecommunity.org. It's intended for folks that are forty five years and older. And that's livablecommunity.org. I'll take the right to our, our county webpages for livable communities. And the survey link is right there. It's offered in multiple languages. It's available online. If you'd like a paper copy, someone wants paper copies, remember there, they can contact us to request that one mail. But that's the thing, we're supposed to pay return on the link, so. Thank you for the proclamation. Those of us that are forty five and older, go to the website, please, livablecommunity.org.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have consideration of resolution number twenty five eighteen approving proclamation that the first Friday in June be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Is there a motion? Motion by Nick, is there a second? Second by Lisa. Roll call vote.
Turbo?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Schroder absent, Swales absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now I'll read the proclamation. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of University Heights to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to end this public health crisis. Whereas every day, a hundred and twenty five people in the United States are killed by gun violence and more than two hundred and sixty are shot and wounded with an average of more than nineteen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas people in the United States are twenty six times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high income countries. And whereas Iowa has an average of three hundred and forty three gun deaths every year with a rate of ten point seven deaths per one hundred thousand people. A crisis that costs the state four point two billion each year, of which fifty three million is paid by taxpayers. Iowa has the forty second highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all gun homicides in the nation occurring in forty two cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including in University Heights, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve in is mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens go hand in hand with keeping guns away from those who are in danger to themselves and others. And whereas mayors, council members and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence protection, prevention is more important than ever as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. Whereas in January two thousand and thirteen, Hattia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age fifteen. And on June sixth, two thousand and twenty five, to recognize the twenty eighth birthday of Hattia Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to one, Hattia Pendleton's and other victims of gun violence, two, the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hattia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June sixth, the first Friday in June of two thousand and twenty five to help raise awareness about gun violence and whereas by wearing orange on June sixth, two thousand and twenty five, people across the United States will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Louise Frome, Mayor of the City of University Heights, declares the first Friday of June, June sixth, two thousand and twenty five, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And Mary Panther, a resident of University Heights, is here to accept the proclamation. And you can already shoot them. I'll hear it go. Do you have a photo?
Do you like to speak, Mary? Just for a second. Thanks, everyone. We're all aware that our culture is driven with gun violence. We all want it. And I got involved with Honest Man actions, which is the grassroots barn in every town for gun safety. After the, I don't know, umpteen school shooting a few years ago. I don't know if you're aware, but now gun violence is just the number one cause of death for children in our country. Yeah, that's pretty sober. So encouraging friends to wear orange, not just June sixth, but through that weekend, the sixth through the eighth. As you said, it was started after the death of Hattia. Hattia was the young girl who was marching in the inaugural parade in two thousand and thirteen. And then a short time later was told by gun violence, not that being off the parade, obviously, but in our own community. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, well now we'll go on to legal report and Steve, thank you for sending around your report after your youngest daughter graduated from college. I remember when she was born, so there you go. So are there any questions for Steve with his legal report right now? Do you have any comments?
No, I might say if you were, when we get to
Okay.
You know, on the right side of the resolution.
Sure. Okay, and choice and around the city administrator report. And did you want to?
Yes, I'd like to.
Review a few things?
Most of his feeds for itself there, but I would like to go over the twenty eight agreement that is the next resolution should be considered, the twenty eight agreement, the City of Iowa City for Transit Services. We've discussed this a little bit before. I talked about it with council, probably around the beginning of this year. But Iowa City approached the City of University Heights sometime probably late fall last year when I became on a city administrator. The mayor tasked me with working through a reallocation of the reapportionment of transit costs with Iowa City. Just historically, this has been a one-year agreement. It has been based on something that was negotiated a long time ago or a while ago. And each year there was a percentage increase based on the Consumer Price Index. And over the years, that has become increasingly skewed where we were no longer paying really our fair apportionment of transit costs. And Iowa City was asking to renegotiate that and revisiting. Together with Iowa City, with Jeff Brun and Chris O'Brien, we sat down and we examined several different mythologies, several different communities in the region. Madison, Cedar Falls, Waterloo, and there's a whole bunch of them that we looked at. And their cost-sharing methodologies. And we came up with a population-based formula to assess the cost. And it was most favorable to University of, University Heights, both in the short term, it was a thirty percent increase. Some of them were, were hundreds of percent increase. And by basing it on a population formula, University Heights will have very limited population growth in the foreseeable future where Iowa City will continue to grow and expand. So our relative population to Iowa City will get smaller and smaller and smaller. So as this is recalculated down the road, I expect costs to increase with inflation, but a relative portion of those costs should stay the same or decrease moving into the future. Again, this was roughly a thirty percent adjustment, increase in cost for the City of University Heights. I spoke with Stephen Poole way back in the, in the process of the budget process and said, hey, I believe Iowa City will be agreeable to allowing us to phase this in, to stair step in and not suddenly see a thirty percent increase in our budget. And that wasn't even the case. We were able to work out an agreement where this upcoming budget year, we will increase our contribution by ten percent. The following fiscal year, we will increase it by another ten percent. And then the third fiscal year, we will increase it by another ten percent or roughly ten percent. And that will bring us up to what our portion should be by this new formula. That's why it's a three-year agreement instead of a one-year agreement. It will take three years for us to step through to, to kind of our final position on this new formula. And after that, we will probably go back to one-year agreements. The same formula will be used. There shouldn't be any drastic adjustments in the foreseeable future and we should be adjusted moving forward. So again, that's kind of in a nutshell, we go up from, I think we were forty seven thousand dollars and change last year. I believe we're going up to almost fifty three thousand this upcoming fiscal year. Then just under fifty nine thousand and then in this full year, twenty eight will be at sixty four thousand five hundred and I guess that will be where we should be then. So that's what the agreement is for. That's how those numbers came, came to be. The drastic changes are the thirty percent increase spread over three years and it being a three-year agreement instead of a one-year agreement. Does anybody have any questions about that? I probably did a better job explaining it in my report, but I'm only at least verbalizing. Hey, Dan?
I have one thing. I mean, it needs to be approved by our council and then it will be sent to Iowa City and approved by their city council.
Correct. And they are next meeting on the twentieth. The plan was when Jeff Brun and I would be, this would be presented to our council today and hopefully approved, at which time we would go back to Iowa City and they would approve it at their council. As a related aside, we historically also approved our seats agreement. At the same time, there are actually two separate agreements. They were not able to, that, that we negotiated directly the seats from that and not Iowa City Transit. And Don was not able to get through that in order for me to get it on this agenda. So that will just see that next month. Yes.
Thank you. So you have some other?
Unless there's any other questions, the rest of the, the report, I believe, speaks for itself. And so you have other questions on that? And I would, however that goes, I'd like to present the resolution twenty five sixteen to council.
Is there a motion? Motion by Steph, second. I think you raised your hand, Lisa. Okay, discussion. Roll call vote.
Moore?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Turbo?
Hi.
Schroder absent, Swales absent. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Go on to your report, Mike. You circulated that.
Uh, only thing I need to ask for tonight is approval of the liquor license for Stella Restaurant. That they have completed all the steps.
And that's a simple
That's a simple, simple motion and yes.
Okay, motion by Steph and second by Lisa. Okay, this is consideration of Class C liquor license renewal for operating Stella Restaurant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Three, the two absent.
Three, zero, two.
Okay, very good. We'll go on. Any, any other questions for Mike from his report? Okay, John Brown sent around the treasures report. And first, first listed were warrants. Did everyone have a chance to look at the warrants? Okay, is there any additions or corrections to the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. Any questions for John? I know you and Steve worked a lot on the amended budget. And I appreciate all your work on that and circulating it around to us. Thank you for doing that. Okay, we'll go on to finance. And we're going to discuss the FY twenty five amended budget. Nick, would you like Steve Poole to talk to us? Yeah, okay, Steve.
Let's see, we've got a couple of items that will be up on the screen.
You're going to put them up there?
The first, first one that'll be up is the, the publication of that public hearing in two weeks. It will be in the press citizen on Thursday. This aspect published at least ten days before it can, that can institute reading, so. The copy of the public hearing notice. This has already been sent to the press citizen and Mike got the proof copy, made it up late today and it's good to go. So this will be in favor Thursday. So there's three columns on this. The left column here is the budget that we certified a year ago. And then current amendment amount and our adjusted budget for the year. Just going to go through some of the more significant adjustments. Most of these are, we've discussed them before, but just to recap that. Let's see, this would be on line six, the other city taxes, hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. That is the estimated level option, sales tax that we receive by June thirtieth. Let's see. Charges for service was increased by nineteen thousand five hundred. When we do the original budget, we do not budget the police overtime for University of Iowa services for football games. So we've also added, that was about twelve thousand five hundred, which also was forty dollars.
There'd be a forty special piece.
Okay, yeah, that's running close to five. Okay, yeah, that's running close to five thousand so far this year. So that's pretty bad extra that we've never had before. So that will help. Uh miscellaneous revenues on line twelve. Decrease of two hundred and twenty one thousand uh, out of that. In the original budget, we've had speed camera revenue, estimated two hundred and fifteen thousand. That's been taken out. Um, and then other financing sources, uh, that is proceeds of bond sales to fund the capital projects. We did not have to sell any bonds this year. Still have a little bit left over for the twenty twenty two. To um, every the Titan and Ridge, Ridgeview project comes up real short here. So that money's pretty much gonna be spent. So um, let's see. Spencers. Public safety did not change a lot. Um fact, um, even even when we added the police overtime payroll because we were short-staffed earlier in the year. Um, we're actually coming down, I think, the whole payroll increase with the payroll taxes and you have twelve thousand dollars off of that. So that was a much smaller adjustment for this year. Let's see. Culture and recreation, uh, decrease of a hundred and ninety thousand. Um, so what that is, is when we do the original budget, just so we don't have wide fluctuations in 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 net income each year. In the original budget, we just uh, we just make the assumption that the hotel motel tax is gonna be all spent during the year, which we know it doesn't. Not all of it does. So what we're doing here is we're actually adjusting um, culture and recreation basically is library services. And uh, just a few other small things. Uh, community and economic development, we're increasing that by nineteen thousand dollars. And most of that is the increase of the mentioned with visitors there, the last summer, right around July, June, July, um, state changed the payment of that. On it used to be paid quarterly, now it's being paid monthly. So there's a little bit of actually the revenue for this year. I got like thirteen, fourteen months worth of collections and then likewise the CBD fee was a little bit. Uh, let's see. Capital projects decrease of four hundred and eighty seven thousand. Uh, the bulk of that was um, we had originally budgeted, um, starting on the structure. Melrose Complete Streets, that's actually in next fiscal year. So we still have about five items all together that make up that hundred and forty seven thousand dollar adjusted amount. Um, that change on line twenty nine. About thirty one thousand dollar increase, but a decrease. And we adjusted net for the year is a decrease of about forty two thousand dollars. Um, it's just a combination of various things. Obviously, we have some hotel motel tax that we're not spending. And that's also your pay and capital projects out of money that we already have in. So um, as far as like general fund, road use tax fund, um, general fund didn't, doesn't seem to have a whole lot of fluctuation in it. Changed during the year. The road use tax, that kind of just depends on street pain replacements, no street repairs projects. We have a little bit right here anticipated, not insignificant. So so that's pretty much summary of it. Um, also we adjust the cash balance. We're projecting, um, assuming that if things pretty much follow. Actual follows what we have for the amended budget, we still have about one and a half million dollars cash on the bill going forward. Um, also, I did, um Mike, would you get that ten page to repeat detail here? Yeah, that's what I went through. You know, we covered a lot of other things that I probably had mentioned before, um, even things like the PMV for this space, we've accounted for that, that went up. So we got that figured through the end.
Melissa voice just went up again.
I think we were, we were really close on.
Yeah, 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 well, yeah, all the two months left in this one year, yeah. Something we would think for twenty six is just.
So, so anyway, I've been working at this a lot over the last two and a half weeks or so. Tried to pinpoint then, uh, we basically took where where the city was at as of March thirty first and right projected out to the last six, the last three months of fiscal year. So thinking this probably be somewhere in the ballpark first, you know, unexpected things may happen. Goes off a little bit, but I'm expecting a real change.
I was just saying, as John was referring to, the PMVs went up because we found out at a recent meeting that the insurance for the building that had been sixteen thousand or something like that is now forty seven thousand dollars a year. And it changed last June. We, we just found out about it. So we had quite a balance to put back. And there's, there's some optimism that it will go down. So actually the PMVs will go back down a little bit. That's pretty John.
Yeah. Any other questions for John or Steve?
And then.
Thanks both of you for your work on this and we'll have the public hearing on May twenty seventh. You've got everything sent to the paper.
Yeah.
And Mike will be in Ireland. And so Troy is gonna run the meeting, correct? So that's good.
We have practiced today.
That's great. Okay, thank you. We'll go on. Anything else, Nick, that you wanted to add? Okay, we'll go on to community protection and Chief, do you wanna start? Uh, you sent around your chief report.
That's
You're walking pretty darn good.
Not too bad. I'm getting along. I'm getting along.
Good.
So, uh, the, the only thing that I would add to this is I need to thank policing there for helping select the the fog eye flight during the year. And it is on its way. We've got all these lights.
I like seeing all the things that you and your police are doing in the, out in the community and attending meetings and you know, and you're doing great community policing, I feel.
More active, we are involved.
Yeah.
And the guys.
Great.
That's it. That's the best part. They stay enjoy.
Yeah, University Heights is getting represented in other cities around. That's very good.
Okay.
Any question? Okay, so Steph, did you have something today? Okay, so we'll go on to uh, engineer's report. Now you don't have much tonight, right? Okay.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
We'll pass it to you. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, I'll um try to be as brief as possible, but the um I'll start with an easy one. We had street sweeping work completed. And so there's an invoice included in the report for that, which is two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, for that work completed by Shred Construction, which was on the warrants list, um, included with John's report. And then I'll move to some of the resolution stuff. So for Highland Drive and Ridgeview Avenue Improvements, that's a project obviously that we had bids come in last week on Thursday. Um, I've also been coordinating with the city of Iowa City. Uh, they performed some inspections of the existing sanitary uh sewer manholes uh within the project limit areas. Up there on Highland and Ridgeview. And there was one that they wanted replaced. So we coordinated with them to add that to our plans before we sent them out to bid and uh, and also talked through with them the twenty eighty agreement. You know, kind of, the agreement is that they would pay for, for that work, for replacement of sanitary manholes or or water main type things, which we don't have any water main work on this project. But so we have um a memorandum of understanding, which is pretty well the same sort of agreement we entered into with Iowa City. For all of court and there was utility work with that project as well, written up very similarly, um for that. So resolution twenty five twelve uh, before council tonight is a resolution approving this memorandum of understanding with the city of Iowa City to share in the expense of that twenty twenty five Highland Drive and Ridgeview Avenue improvement project for the sanitary sewer related costs.
So we'll consider that right now, resolution twenty five twelve and uh, is there a motion? Motion by Lisa, is there a second? Oh, that was a far.
He was very.
Okay. So motion by Nick and second by you. Very good. Uh, discussion. Roll call vote.
John.
Hi.
Herbal.
Hi.
More.
Hi.
Schroder absent, Swill's absent. Carry three zero two.
Thank you.
And then the other related resolution we have um, is, is regarding the bid results themselves. Uh, so we received bids in our low bid uh, was from Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete um, of Cascade Iowa and uh, their their bid was just under three hundred thousand. Our estimate was right around three forty one. Uh, so we were pleased with that number. We had four bidders for this work. Kind of a range from three hundred to three eighty with a couple in the middle there right near our estimate. So uh felt pretty good on where things landed and the interests in, in the work. So but we've uh, I don't have any um personal experience with this contractor, but other folks in our office have recently had a project in North Liberty with them and everything went very well, they've told me. So felt pretty confident. And moving forward and recommending award uh, to, to the contractor for the prime contract. So resolution twenty five thirteen um, is a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the construction contract for the University Heights twenty twenty five Highland Drive and Ridgeview Ave. Improvements Project to Eastern Iowa Excavating Concrete and Concrete. Uh, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete. In the amount of two hundred and ninety nine thousand, five hundred and ninety nine dollars and forty five cents. So moves.
Okay, motion by Nick. So second, second by Steph. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Herbal.
Hi.
More.
Hi.
Gun.
Hi.
Motion carry Schroder absent, Swill is absent. Motion carries three zero two. Okay, and then I think the resolution, the next one is twenty five fifteen regarding sidewalk inventory repair and replacement. Program plans. And I, I know Steve, Steve put this one together for me. Um, in reading this one, it's, it's a resolution that's just stating that the the council desires us to go and do inspections and mark upside up panels that are uh, in need of repair. Uh, and then there's a few, there would be a future resolution uh to issue notices and require those replacements to be made. Does that summarize that pretty well?
Yeah, I think so. The, I think the point that when we had a staff meeting about it and I can't remember the council directly this or not, if council may have some of the questions. I think the point of the resolution is just so that when people start seeing paint on their sidewalks, starting to phone calls. One, that there's a document that somebody can reference Troy, or it might be something to summarize or put on the website just to let people know that this is the plan. Taking an inventory right now. Maybe more to come. You get a notice, you can be the worker yourself. We plan to get a contractor and you can join that. That's, that's the point. So not a whole lot being done as such by the resolution except to try to give, which is a lot.
Right. I know one thing we've talked about is just making this as efficient as possible, like the process. Do you feel pretty good about it's being as efficient as possible in terms of how it's starting out?
Um, I think so. Yeah, I mean, I, I do think in kind of our conversations when we met as staff again, there's concerns. So I think that you know, we may, might have taken a while to get to this point, right, from last fall. Um, but in moving forward, I think it will work out well. The plan sort of that I tried to summarize or lay out in my report of let's inspect the entire city because I think we'll get the best economy of scale. It'll be more efficient to just sort of I guess, kind of rip the Band-Aid and get all that work done in, in one year instead of and then do that once every five years. Instead of every year, we're doing some sort of inspection and looking up and administering, uh, you know, a list of properties and that need repair and things of that nature. So I do think that's probably the most efficient way to do it for an entire city that's, that's the size, right? So but I don't know, is it, was there any other questions on my report, part of the sidewalk? I don't, I probably don't need to expand much. So then I guess officially twenty five fifteen for council is a resolution concerning an inventory of city sidewalks and program for repair and replacement.
Oh, you make the motion. Okay, so moved by Steph. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
More.
Hi.
Gun.
Hi.
Herbal. Hi.
Schroder absent, Swill's absent. Carries three zero two.
Okay, I'm not quite done.
I know, it's good. We're good.
All right. So my next one is twenty five seventeen. Okay.
So twenty five seventeen um, is in regards to accepting quotations for appraisal of property. We're, um, and this is associated with Melrose Avenue Complete Streets Project. Um, so we requested some proposals from a couple of local appraisers uh, in the Iowa City area and um in, in my discussions over the last week with them and, and describing the, the, the project. Um, I received a proposal from each of them uh, yesterday. And and one is lower than the other. Um, although I'm recommending to council that we award the, the higher cost proposal. And the reason for that being that in the higher cost proposal, they, they stated that the work could be done and the reports would be delivered within six weeks or sooner. Uh, the lower cost proposal was that it would take at least sixty days and there is really no definite and, and timeline to that. So with the Melrose Complete Streets Project, time is really of the essence at this point. Um, we are behind schedule a little ways on the easement acquisition process. And without those, we can't send the final plans to, to the DOT, which are due in middle of September for, for bidding the project for middle of December. So the DOT needs three months leeway for a review of final plans. And we can't send the final plans in until we have either the easements and acquisitions completed or, or dates for eminent domain acquisitions set before that date. So so that's an important part of this process and it's a very kind of long process to go through. So uh, I thought, I thought that was important to know. And then also the um, the higher cost firm is, has got more experience doing this work uh, for various cities in our area, North Liberty, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids. Um, and the DOT, um, the, the lower cost firm has, has, does have some experience. So not to say that they, they couldn't be completed and aren't, aren't qualified to perform the work. But they, they don't have as much experience performing um public uh, acquisition appraisal. So see what else. Do you have any other sense of, I mean, is this generally reasonable? Um, in your experience, because it does seem high compared to what I've seen and obviously in comparison to the other. Um, yeah, I mean, I think so when I talked with the DOT's right away coordinator, um, last month or late in March, um Um, yeah, I mean, I think so when I talked with the D O T's right away coordinator um last month or late in March um. Uh about appraisers specifically in this process, they he told me to expect around one thousand to twenty five hundred dollars per property. So it's actually right in the middle, the higher the higher number is, the lower number is actually below that, so. What makes this so tricky compared to the typical? As far as like the just the cost of it?
Yeah.
Um I don't know if Steve could speak better to that than I can, but I think it's just that the public taking process is a more complicated. And time consuming process than.
I don't know, I mean, I can't really speak to what.
I just know I, I mean, I've seen the other company in my work and I. You know, know they have experience, but not necessarily with this, I mean, I don't know about this specific sort of appraisal, so. That's just what I wasn't sure what the complication is, and I could see why it would be a little more complicated than just. Like a C M A sort of approach, but. I'm I'm glad to know that's in the ballpark of what.
Yeah, I mean, so using that range from the D O T, twenty seven thousand five hundred would have been the high end of that range that they're giving, so. I think both companies in my discussion with them noted for this project in particular, it's a very difficult. Process because of the location of it, um so the complications are. Okay, how like football parking, all these other things that just you don't typically have, and um. And and um the potential for realigning driveways or um. Impacting parking lots and things of that nature are are sensitive, so. There there's more impact involved and. Yeah.
Nick, can I just shoot for the hip from the hip for a minute as a former city councillor when we were doing?
Yeah.
Ryan just hit it on the head, people think the city's gonna take our land, we want we want big money for it, and and they're gonna do a lot of things that mess us up. And so people are just less willing to negotiate, and plus it's it's fields and spaces that have football parking sometimes.
Yeah. So.
Seems like a lot of it's been that that part of it is really Paul's property more than anything. It's not, he thinks of it. Not only Paul, but.
For, I'm sorry.
For this project, yeah, for the like loss of football park, maybe south of, south of Melrose too.
I can't say I've been to a game where I've recently where I've noticed how many vehicles are parked on which ones, I guess, so. I I can't speak to exactly which properties, but I mean, the two properties. Um to the east of the intersection on the south side, obviously with realigning those driveways and taking out. Some parking spots there. Put along a corner pusher. And Melrose would be an impact, now they're not gonna lose their entire yard if they're able to park. Cars there still, but yeah.
Ryan, I don't remember if it was you or Steve who meant that, but wasn't the fact that. Some of the properties are commercial or these packs commercial, the exact implications also.
It could, yeah, it could. The 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 lot that's across from Stella is it's assessed as commercial. Long residential. I think the accessory due to the use, the accessory sees this commercial use. Seven days a week per year, maybe a few levels. So I don't think that complicates things, it could.
Uh the commercial properties were more expensive from both from both. Appraisers, yeah, so I guess if that. Answers that a little bit, I. I think there's more to to think through because of the implications to the commercial businesses. And their potential impact for business, I guess, right, that's.
So that, yeah, so it's it's more expensive, but these people are known to do this more, and in terms of. This sort of work, I'm hearing it's in the middle of the the typical range, so.
Yeah.
I would be ready to move for passage of Resolution twenty five seventeen.
And second, you have a second, Lisa?
On which one, I guess we wanna make sure.
I think the first, I guess, are they both called seventeen?
Yeah, they're both called seventeen.
So the one with Cook appraisal, the first one.
You have that mic down?
I have, yep.
Okay, is there any further discussion? We'll call both.
John.
Hi.
Herbald.
Hi.
More.
Hi.
Motion Schroeder absent, Swells absent, motion carries three zero two.
And I guess I would just add that if. If the timeline can be accelerated because they've stated we we're committed to doing this within this timeline. And we're able to keep the project on schedule for letting in December, there could be. A lot more than a ten thousand dollar difference realized in in inflation rates for the construction costs, so um. So that could be a way of saying like, yeah, if we spend. An extra ten thousand now, we might save over a hundred thousand dollars just in extra sharing costs due to.
What is the penalty if they don't do it in?
I don't have, I mean, there's not a mechanism that I have right now, but I've verified with them today that they. See no issue waiting in that time, so.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess I'd have to take this, Steve on.
Steve, do you see that being, I mean, it seems like a material.
Yeah.
Term, but I, but if they blow past it and.
Yeah. My sense is that the people, the appraisers, students kind of work with the government tendencies, like. Time which are into it. That's that I don't make it simply to progress it, we're talking about.
Soon we accept it, you know, I'm just I think that.
Yeah.
Part of the reason we took the higher bid was timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Any other thing, Ryan?
I, you know, I don't think so, I think that's all I had, I think there was some information about this Gulfview Avenue Drainage Channel Maintenance Resolution, but. Uh that was something Steve is preparing for agreement language reasons, and I think we pulled that one at this meeting, so. So I, I don't, unless there's any other questions from anybody, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Ryan, thanks for all your work on this, I know you've been taking long hours on all of this, I appreciate it. We all do. So we'll go ahead and go to building zoning and sanitation, and Tim's not here tonight and didn't send a report, so we'll go to Lisa's. Report. On e-government, and I think you should do pictures and photos every time, so we can see Troy working hard.
Yeah.
And his. That was great. Look at the community event, it was really kind of a whole community event. And then you took pictures of all the good stuff.
Somebody.
We said it should be a swap meet, too.
Maybe we'll change the name.
John, did you pick up some good things?
Yeah, just to run a vision.
I did try to contact houses and the homes, there was so much good stuff. Uh they did call me back, but it was after, it was too late, but next year I will be online contact, just like. Is if they had clues out that we may deliver this, so with some better planning next year, maybe we can salvage some additional.
I don't know, it's all good.
I think the date was possibly the perfect date because some of these people were. Liquid dating. So a week later, we might have missed them, so let's remember that.
You're right, we should look at graduation and yeah, there you go, and when school's out. The thing, well, May is better than April, we have better weather too.
Chief and I both got garbage cans that Lisa was getting rid of.
And they were excited about it.
Any questions for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa, and thanks for showing the report, that's very nice. So um I don't think we have any other agenda, are there any announcements?
I would just like to comment two things there, one, uh for those who. We know and love Paul Moore, uh his wife's visitation and memorial service is next Saturday. Uh the seventeenth, it's at First Christian Church. Oralville Visitation is ten AM to eleven, memorial service is eleven AM to noon. And then I'd also was in was in Lisa's government before, but I'd just like to remind everybody that Thursday, May twenty second. Seven AM to nine AM is our bike breakfast outside City Hall, uh Jeff Pearl will again be here. Making his his awesome smoked salmon bagels. Uh shout out to Think Iowa City, they are. Contributing money for some of the other items, such as juice and things like that, so. Just those two items, I'd like to remind people.
Thanks, Troy. Anything else there? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent, thank you, everyone.